So, this was intended to be a joint meeting with ERB and they're coming in. Members are held up on the train because of brain centralizing problems. Yeah, so at least the planning board's here and we'll get going with ours. This is, there is a lot of, by the way, do you have microphones or no one's playing at home?
It'll be taped and recorded later.
Oh, you mean we have to repeat it?
No.
We'll have scripts that we can read from very animated.
Makes it so much easier.
Okay. In any event, we don't want to lose these gems, of course, you know, so they're not recorded. But in any event, we all were out there back in February on a very, very cold day in January. I can't recall, it was freezing. And now we're back and you guys have done a lot of work and getting a program for us. Just to refresh folks, Steve Coleman, who is the environmental coordinator, has the jurisdiction of the tree clearing process in that application. The ERB is involved with the wetlands and the planning board is involved with Bob on the stormwater and the steep slopes. So we're kind of split up and that's why we thought we would do this jointly so that it might be more efficient for you and we can do this as quickly as possible. So here we are, maybe if you bring us up to date with what you've got going and what you're proposing and we'll go from there.
That'd be great. Thank you for those opening remarks and thank you for gathering everyone together. Appreciate it. We have done a lot of work since we last got together. I know we all know the history, so I thought we could just dive right into the plan that we're now proposing. There's one thing, one item I'll open up, but since we've asked for the planning board, Greg Pleischer from Environmental Capital, has been added to the project team and he's been instrumental in helping us devise this plan. So Greg, if you want to start with the plan, we'll just jump right in.
Anybody mind if I stay? Sorry? So, thank you for having us tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to present for you tonight, the hard work that we've done here on this particular project. So, what we've done, working with Glenn and Seth and Barry, to sort of coordinate how we're going to address some of the issues on this site, the first thing that we did was we wanted to come into the drainage course area and this regulated 150-foot buffer area and we reduced the lawn area there by about 90 percent. We went from 121,000 square feet of lawn down to just about 15,000 square feet. So we greatly reduced that area. We were able to achieve that with a number of tree, shrub, perennial plugs, and riparian planting beds. Okay, so what's included in that area, I'll just go down through the laundry list here. The riparian areas were expanded, we had about 13,000 square feet. Planting beds are about 40,000 square feet and meadow is going to account for about 47,000 square feet, just over an acre. So, you can all see from the drawing that what was once lawn is now sort of like this rich mosaic of various plantings that are going to be covering different strata in the herbaceous, shrub, and tree strata in that particular area. In addition, outside of the 150-foot buffer area, we're also including a number of tree and shrub plantings, specifically in the area of the steeper slopes where there was lawn. We're now proposing sort of patches of shrubs in this area, the suggestion of Steve Coleman. Steve pointed out to us that the shrubs would provide a much greater stability and would be able to generate sort of a root system that would prevent erosion a lot quicker and really do a nice job of that out there. Some of the other things that we've sort of incorporated into the plan are trying to create these transition zones from south to north, from north to south across the site where we brought in some meadow plantings, trees, and shrubs to sort of integrate into all the plantings that we're doing along this drainage course in this particular area. Okay? And with regard to the drainage course, what we've done there, as you all saw when you were out there, there's a nice substrate of rocks that were sort of placed in the area. We're going to be sort of selectively removing rocks, selectively expanding the riparian area. The idea is to marginally expand it, but to just attenuate the water. And the goal, right, the end game for all of this is that any water that's coming off the property, we want to maintain that water quality. We want to maintain the water quantity. We want to make sure that everything that's coming off is the same as it was before. And that's what we've achieved through this balance here. And so, you guys have done a great job, I would say Barry and Glenn and Seth, in keeping the design in a way that we're really maintaining what was pre-existing on the site as far as flow, water quality, and water quality. Okay, anybody have any questions about that, about the plantings with mitigation?
Yeah, one question. The understory is deer resistant?
Glenn and Seth, will you speak to that?
We have a fence around this property, so we're not concerned with the browsing of the deer. It's the only way to really have this kind of a rich, robust menu of planting survive. So, we have got a ton of pollinators, we have a ton of herb-friendly plants. Without the fence, we would not have much of a chance. We've done some sampling plots on the north and south sides of the property and the understory is completely lawn. What understory there is outside of these property lines is primarily invasive material. It's mostly barberry, stilt grass, burning bush, privet to a large extent. We never think you'd find it there, but it, there is.
Stilt grass, stilt grass is prevalent.
Right. So, by having the fence, we can basically keep, obviously, the deer off the property. Still maintain wildlife, anything, any, any of the animals that come and go, basically the birds that fly in, the insects that fly in, any burrowing animals such as woodchucks and that, excuse me, kind of thing, can still get in there. We're not crazy about the idea of having woodchucks, probably pretty rare here, but it's rich enough, diverse enough, and protected to let it really get established.
The idea is to create a mosaic here, you know, give it a small mammals, game birds, songbirds, everything's going to have sort of its own sort of strata, sort of inhabit in this particular area. It's a very rich environment that we're proposing all throughout the site.
Do you propose to fence off the entire property or just the area that you're improving?
It's fenced.
The whole perimeter right now, current perimeter.
How high a fence?
Six feet.
Okay. So that will have a tendency, obviously, to keep deer out, but it'll also keep out some of the other mammals that we have in there, foxes, deer.
One strategy which we have been kicking around would be to create small wildlife passage openings, especially along the northern side of the, you know, the drainage corridor, you know, so that amphibians and reptiles and, you know, small mammals can, you know, to birth some, you know, the spec that we usually use. It's an opening that's about 12 inches wide, you know, about 25 feet, you know, and spaced at different intervals so that, because a lot of times what squirrels will do is that they hit a barrier like a fence, they will walk along defenses when they find an opening. You know, so it's pretty effective and it keeps, you know, the problem animals out left, the deer and, you know, the predators, rabbits and stuff.
And that's a good idea. I would add too, in our work at the site, you know, we walked up and down the site along the adjacent properties, and what you find when you're on this site is that along the top, there's sort of a ridge line, a very steep ridge line, and then along the south, there's another ridge line. So any of your, like, no likelihood your larger mammals or any, most large mammals are going to be coming across way above the property. And then following, there's another drainage course to the south of the site with a lot of like numerous forests and it's much more conducive to wildlife making its way down to the wetlands that's there across Sore Street down there. So Steve's right, for the most part, any adjustment you make to the fence is probably more of a small mammals and reptiles in that particular area.
So I think that's a good idea and we should have that.
Now, on the, I guess ERB has looked at this a little bit more closely and they should, it's theirs, but the attenuation that we speak about for that stream, it was extraordinarily steep when we were out there, so I wasn't sure. And, but how do you plan to do it? What are the details? I mean, it seems to me that you're going to have to have a lot of pools to bring that speed down and maintain the quality of the water coming down that extraordinary steep hill.
Sure.
That was one of the items we, you know, had addressed in the letter, you know, for guidelines for them to work on and they've done a good job of, you know, addressing the stream corridor and creating, you know, some openings, they're going to remove rocks to allow natural infiltration, but the primary goal is to reduce the velocity, you know, cut out the whole, you know, corridor. So I think they've addressed that pretty well.
We've done a couple common things also.
Whenever it's a property, if, go ahead and describe.
Sure, just an overview. So, absolutely right. So the idea is to create some more open pools for ponding of water, also to take out some of the rocks along the bottom to encourage more infiltration down and also the ability to have plants growing within the corridor, within the channel. We also have rocks and boulders that help, are going to be really used to slow down velocity, a series of check dams on the steeper portions. So, and also Barry will get in, this is a little bit later, we're actually putting out, capturing a lot in this naturalistic retention area above it before it gets there and then the water that does come through here, this will get infiltrated, the water that does find its way down here, we'll have plenty of opportunity to.
So that will capture some of the water coming off the ledge before it actually gets to the air.
The idea, like, from a, from a whole approach for the property is that, you know, the difference in coefficient between what the existing substrate was on the forest floor as compared to the sod that's essentially there now, it's an increase probably overall of maybe 5 percent, like the coefficient around off the water coming off the site. So, and Barry, I'll let Barry get into all this, he's the engineer of course, but, you know, we're going to have an increase of about 9,000 to 10,000 cubic feet of water that we need to collectively store. And so what we instituted on the site is this basin here, which is like 5,600 square foot basin, four feet deep. That's going to give us 20,000, right, cubic feet of storage in that one particular area in association with coltex throughout the site. So we're going to be picking up and intercepting water, a lot of it, before it's even reaching the particular drainage course there. So, I mean, in total, I think we're doing 20,000 cubic feet for the basin and 16,000 cubic feet for the coltex, so 36,000. So we're running a modest.
What will the treatment be on the southern side?
On this particular side, apparently, I believe it's.
Yeah, I could go to that as well. Do you want to transition over to this form or go through some of that, if you'd like a question?
I did the.
Do you have questions on something else first?
Well, on that drainage, that drainage course, it was my recollection when we did the walkthrough that the, the rocks were more like sheet, right? And so when you talk about selectively, it was a very smooth sheet. When you talk about selectively removing them, it sounds like maybe not very many of those rocks are coming down or being changed into something with grit, but how, you know, are you satisfied with the amount of change that will take place in that surface?
I mean, we, I haven't had a chance to study the plan in a lot of detail, but one of the things we're going to do is go out in the field and look, you know, compare it with the plan and see, you know, how much is being done and, you know, we can always modify if we need to at that point. But conceptually, I think, you know, because most of the storm events are, you know, smaller duration, I think it's going to make a big difference in terms of the runoff in that mix.
Determination, but I was looking at the stormwater report last night.
Can you folks speak up?
I mean, keep in mind, just the volume alone is an increase based on how it is now, you know, an increase of 24,000 cubic feet of water coming in that way anytime there's a big storm in it. That's been happening over the past 10, 11 months. Same with the peak flows, you know, we get five, six percent increases and that does a lot of damage to the roadway. I had discussions with the commissioner of public works. They've noticed an increase in ponding, no matter what the engineer records is, thankfully by what the commissioner says.
Sure.
And he's found out that it's been like that over the past 10 months, which is still time, same timeline as that. So, you know, I'm a little bit skeptical of how this is going to be refurbished because it's been clear in its entirety over the past 10 months. And my opinion of the salt and these engineers to do the stormwater improvements based on the conditions as they are now without thinking that, oh, we're going to do this, we're going to have a little thing here. A lot of those things are just nice little anecdotal things to do, but to me, it doesn't get to the part of it to reduce the stormwater peak flows.
I think we agree with you 100%.
But let me finish. My opinion is keep it and do it, even mentions it in this report. You have the room, you have the area, you have the capacity, do it as it is now. And if it does grow out, like you say, so be it, that's great.
Yeah.
I'd rather have it that way than say, well, we're going to have all this and it never comes to fruition. How are we going to enforce that?
No, I think we agree with you 100%. 100%.
That's just my whole memo pretty much.
Yeah, yeah.
Those are the two big items, ST1 and ST2.
Sure.
So that's my recommendation to the stormwater. If you want to finish this up.
Sure. Yeah.
Certain reasons, certain reasons I disagree with the African engineering one that they put in there. And I think if they're going to go along with it, they should perform all the necessary peeps. And I think, Barry, you've done that yet?
No, and really because we wanted to get a general concurrence from everybody of our approach we're jumping into, but I do know that, I would say 80% of the areas that we're utilizing for coltex was in the exact locations that were the approved septic systems for the subdivision. And I did pull those records and I do have, you know, all the deep testing, per test information from that subdivision that were witnessed by the health department. So, yes, we are going to do verification testing, but by the same token, we are going into this with a pretty reasonable level of knowledge of what we're working with.
And keep in mind too, since there's no, a new imperviousness, you know, we have to worry about the water quality for the three foot separation.
I'll keep that in mind.
We use the old one, just thinking that long.
Understood.
We use what the county, there's two foot, right? There's no new impervious, but, you know, the increase because of the change in.
Yeah, right. And then, you know, of course, the septic systems that were proposed for the site were much larger than our infiltration beds will be. So, we do have more than adequate area and so it's to try and manage.
And that's an interesting point that should be noted, that if what you're doing is not using all of the septic field that was originally laid out in the septic hall, I think that's good to put in a record that if there's an area of the site that seems inadequate, there is, there are places where you could go back and you could augment, within reason, what was happening.
I think that's the beauty of Barry's design, if you don't mind me saying Barry, is, you know, with the basin and the coltex, having that 36,000 cubic feet of storage as, as designed without the mitigation, that would be correct, Barry.
And by the way, yeah, and by the way, that 36,000 number that was in my report was not based in no way, nowhere near maxing out what we can get into those septic areas. What I was doing is I was just thinking using, I was pointing at representatives, amount of coltex fields and saying, okay, you can get that amount, we can, we can get this. So there's a lot of elbow room in there.
And post mitigation will have a lot more attenuation and infiltration on the site with all those plantings, although I agree with your point, you can't count on that, but it will go a long way towards storm management.
And I think the 20,000 cubic foot pond up above is going to help some of the flashier stuff coming off the ridge.
Absolutely.
There's a lot of outcropping, so that'll, that'll be good to attenuate the stuff going down and if you, and if you can widen it in places and put the silly ponds in and, you know, the little jack dams, that'll help too and hopefully that'll get us to the point where the stuff on the left is back to where it should have been or should be.
But we still have concerns, I have concerns with, again, the southern side.
Absolutely.
And that is, we were out there, we know it was extraordinarily steep. In fact, there was all kinds of cuts through the roadways and the grass and the lawn and in the woods. And in fact, anecdotally, I can tell you that, you know, in storms that we have had the last couple of hours and weeks, you know, you guys have had some problems. I mean, as the waters come down with such force that at least two times, if not more, your walls come down in parts because of the water pressure. So, I mean, that needs to be looked at. The wall itself is well over four feet, so I don't know what you have in terms of engineering on that wall. It has come down and gone into the road.
Is that a former wall?
We actually.
That was a while back, not yet.
Yeah, it's been up about 10 years or so.
Oh, that wall, that collapse I'm talking about was a few months back.
Couple of weeks ago. I believe that, I believe that, you know better than I about how old that wall is, but just judging by the size of the trees and size of the roots that are underneath that wall, I think that some of that wall or some of the original wall might have been there quite some time, a very long time.
It was all reconstructed in 2010.
Yeah, and in fact, in fact, the one location that we looked carefully about the collapse, it was, it was the day of a very severe windstorm. And when I saw the wall in its open condition, it was about five foot, six foot stretch right at that tree. We did see fresh green lateral stress cracks in the tree and we see that the roots were right to the base of that wall. And that's a dry made wall and we know how those trees were born and there's no doubt in my mind that those roots just shifted things enough.
No.
To bring that down.
But my, my comment really is, is echoing Bob's in that is we have certain conditions now that we have because of lawn and steepness in that area and we have current conditions now that we didn't have before.
Yes.
And the water that rushes now down to the roadway, we didn't have in this kind of volume, we didn't have the kind of washout, et cetera. So I'm equally concerned with the southern side as well as the northern side, which is just the, the stream that you guys.
I can, I can, I can speak to that.
Yep. So, I mean, that's, and one of the things I just mentioned to Steve is I think something that should be looked at as part of this wetlands application or the slopes is you have an entrance to the very southern end of the parcel that is used for service. In fact, it's gated, there's a gate guarantee used a lot by the service folks. I think at this point, you may as well make the application, include it now, do the, the street opening.
Proper stabilization.
And do the proper stabilization, do the environmental ERB application for your wetlands, et cetera, and get that as part of this thing because it should not be segmented, it should be part of this whole process.
We agree with that.
You've got to be talked about that.
This stuff that's.
I know they mentioned, but I think they said they were going to do it later.
Yeah, no, we, we've talked about that in conference calls and where we're going and there's clearly a need for us to utilize that access to do the work on the site and to bring up the material that we need for the coltex and the plant materials and so on and so forth.
Yeah, it's the only way to kind of.
And it's the only way to maintain, want to stunt.
It's understandable, I mean, it just, yeah, it has to be, it should be.
Collectively, we did discuss and agree that that it should be part of this application.
My concern is, I see that you're going to do stuff, you're going to, you're going to make the road swale two feet to three feet wide, so that you can get the grades right. If you can't get the grades right, you're going to need another drain or something.
Yes.
And you have one little small area at the top of that driveway, the southern driveway, where you have a coltex, I think, it's a very small area and I just question whether it's going to be adequate.
Well, again, this was, this, this right here, if that's where you're thinking, this is where the path comes up and makes it bend up in here and there's one coltex area here, there's another coltex area here. By the way, this coltex area will also, since it's close to this path, this coltex area here is also part of the mitigation for this side, the southern side.
Uh huh.
And this can be bigger. I mean, if we, if we see that that could be.
Well, I think you have to, you have to take a look at it, but on the northern side, you have 20,000 cubic feet.
Well, that, that's in total.
That was, that was.
So, so what Barry did.
16,000 for coltex, you said.
Right, but just to be clear, what Barry has done was the site is a natural drainage divide. So we did divide the site per how we're discussing it in sort of a north-south segmentation. So Barry's, so Barry's analysis did both the north and the south and we gave you the 36,000 cubic feet that's throughout the site.
20,000 square feet is on the northern.
It's on the northern portion of the site with that basin, that's correct.
And the other 16,000 is spread across.
Coltex spread across the site, but we do use it to address that southern drainage.
But everything will be, and, and there's another additional area that we have proposed on the southern side as well and that's, there's a little valley right over here that naturally discharges down to that, ultimately down this valley that Brandon was talking about, the 15-inch coltex across the sorrow here. And that too is part of the mitigation for that southern side as well. The drainage divide on the site, as we mentioned, was, the blue is the property itself and the drainage divide on the site goes right up from here. So what we have is about 30 acres on the north side and 21 and a half acres on the south side of total watershed area contributing to these two design points. So part of our analysis is to consider all that and consider that which is going to be mitigating the southern side as well as that's going to be mitigating on the, on the northern side. We are still.
Okay, so that's just, you need more detail as to.
Absolutely.
Right, there's still more detail.
Oh, yeah.
But I just saw the record, they're going to mitigate the current conditions.
Yes, right. That, that's correct. Yes.
Yeah, the question I have, the information with Bob and Barry and Dick, how effective, do you need more coltex when you are, when you're dealing with the water coming in at a volume so it doesn't absorb as quickly? My concern is on that southern side, we were out there, that is extremely steep. Taking care of the stream is one thing, but do you, do you need, I don't know, what's the engineering answer? Do you need more coltex for bigger areas beneath the surface because you need to treat this well coming off of higher volume?
If you get the slope down, the maintenance system, get it into an area where it's being infiltrated.
Okay, you're going to be required to be. Storm management, so you're going to have to treat them.
No matter what.
And in this way, it's Barry can figure out how much it will.
And that's a lot of water and fast, so.
A lot of speed over there too. And, you know, when we get into the final designs of these things, there might be another opportunity in this valley here to create another basin off of that side if we really find them.
There's no chance.
There's not.
Like, in that regard, it's going outside of the boundaries of the property and it's heading to the southern part of the drawing, the question then becomes, is the entry point south in, is that a similar issue to the, to the, the southern gate to the property which we noticed really?
No. No, there hasn't been, no, there hasn't been any evidence we've walked this area, there hasn't been any evidence of original problems across here and we're certainly going to discharge them and, and.
We'd have to look at the fire, we should look at DPW.
Barry will have to bring Anderson, put it through IGP and rather just hoping to bring the feed in.
It's a, it's a.
Right, but also.
Based on the creative, you know, where they're going to be throughout the site.
They can't talk.
Yeah, but in that area, which is off-site, just south of the gate, that's where DPW's had the problem in terms of the flooding of the road. It's a very low area and maybe it's, you know, drain itself that goes across the road is clogged or something to be repaired.
When we met in the field with Jerry, his assistant and.
Jerry, focus, Barry.
And we, we, what I noticed, and I actually noticed that years ago when we started working on the property, a long time ago, is that this, this stretch of the road is roten and flat and clearly this 15-inch coltex was intended to take everything from these areas to there. And over time, if, and, and yes, it has been exacerbated by our site, there's no question about it, but I did know in the past that over time, that water does not readily get down to that crossing. Leaf debris, just, just maintenance, roadway maintenance, it just, it just wasn't continued to be excavated out to provide positive pitch to that coltex. So what we talked about in the field was, we're going to get a detailed, detailed topographic survey of Sore Street so that we can make a determination and be assured that this drainage can very effectively get to that crossing point. And if it can't, as you suggested, maybe there's a reason to have another coltex crossing somewhere else, but that's going to be based upon a detailed topograph.
Yeah, but there's another issue that goes with it because that's where the, one of the two places where the dirt and the soil gets onto the road. And in the wintertime, the ice happens too and, and so that's a bit of an issue. And one thing, that the water, it's a second thing, is to have the mud and everything else.
Well, obviously, we're, we're going to be.
Looking at that.
I will say that there is, there was, on the south side of this multi-path over here, there was a grass channel that was alongside this path itself. And that was very effective in getting this water down into a couple of leaf points. The north side here did not have that swell. There was not a swell constructed when this work was done. And as a result, we do see that along the edge of the multi-path, there was some erosion there and some of that material would get carried down. So if there is, one of our suggestions here is to create that stabilized grass well on the north side of that path as well so that there isn't any more erosion.
And then that feeds into one of the coltex.
And yes, that feeds into supplement coltex. It feeds into two of the coltex actually, those both of these areas.
Keep in mind too, you know, you have a, Barry, for me. You have, you do have a secondary drainage course that is south of the site and that's contributing to that coltex as well. So you're picking up a pretty vast subcatchment, like a drainage area that's coming down. And that drainage course kind of bottoms out into what we call the wetland, somewhat wet area, Steve, over there. And that roadway, as you guys know, you drive by it, there's a ton of barberry, it's kind of propped up along the side there. So any sediment that's moving down with that, a heavy rain event, that's what's kind of causing it to pile up along that edge there. I don't know what contributes to what, but I imagine with the coltex in there, it certainly would be the. would be a lot of that overflow and that water flow. There's a lot of it, it's sort of natural drainage.
Now, getting back to the, getting back to this drainage course on the north side, there was a comment about that, that channel out there now being straight and, and what I want to point out as an overall enhancement here is that, what we call the lower part of the swell in this area here was not open. And what we do see down there is a pretty straight, it's got some storms in it, but we do see that around the bends, there's a fair amount of erosion going on. And by, by stabilizing that and by forflying those banks, you're going to prevent more material from washing down to Sorrel Street and that went across the street. So, that coupled with opening these up into these pools and areas, putting these check dams all along the way, that, that's going to be an incredible improvement to even what was there before. And I think that, well, from a stormwater standpoint, we talked about the, the, these culvert crossings, these culvert crossings are in terrible, terrible shape. And part of what we're going to do is actually make these properly functioning basins with sumps and make sure that the drains that's supposed to get to it does get to us in both of these locations. So, that's going to represent a great improvement as well.
How's the maintenance of all of this?
Well, the maintenance of the highway culverts, that's all, that, that, those are pad, pad structures.
Wasn't it discussed, Steve, with Jerry and Bart, that you were going to be some cleaning of the entrances to those culvert features, kind of fill in the sediment?
Yes, oh, absolutely.
Which will help quite a bit as well.
Yeah.
Who's going to maintain it afterwards?
Well, it's got to be.
The town.
Well, I will tell you that our suggestion initially was to provide a riprock channel across there that would be stabilized and so on and so forth. I think from a maintenance standpoint, the highway department encourages us to consider a pay, and a pay as well, that'd be more sustainable, less, less maintenance.
So, plus sometimes you stop.
So, that's, that's kind of that. So, I, I, I think that.
That's what the commission wants.
Stepping, stepping back to the big picture a little bit, I think what Gregory Leonard described, what I would characterize as, I'm not speaking in this, but from where I sit, this seems like a very monochromatic habitat all over these areas.
Beforehand.
Beforehand, beforehand. And what they're proposing to do is. And as Greg pointed out, there is such a diversity of habitat here that didn't exist either on the site or around. This fire retention area, by the way, is going to be designed such that there's going to be a bottom pool to it that will stay permanently wet, that'll provide different habitat that's not there now. We're going to have these emerging edges that occasionally get inundated, that's good for certainly good use and things like that. So, there's going to be a much, much more diversified habitat on the site than the surrounding area.
It's a nice increase when you're also going to talk about the water course to follow what Barry's saying, something I didn't mention before, you know, distance here is about even 25 feet. And so, you know, right now, it's about 2,000 or so square feet area. By the time we do the planting, widening the riparian areas, we're going to be at around 3,000 square feet, I think, some of those numbers.
Yeah.
So, between making changes to the way the water course sort of pools, ponds, we're going to have, increasing about 30% in the immediate area, that's going to be creating the stream core on the riparian. So, it's a nice setup, for sure, coupled with fire retention.
Talk about those sections.
Of course, yeah, thank you. So, one other thing that we did, at the request of the boards, and Alex Leonard said, of course, speak to these, is we created some cross-sections through that, through that water course area, so you guys can have a good idea of what, and I think it's going to look quite.
Sure.
So, just so you know, the cross-sections come across as A, B, and C, crossing, going, and going down east to west, down the side. But, of course, you just described.
Sure, and so, what we did was, we went out and took photographs of those areas and basically show the different habitats that occur within them. So, there's a riparian corridor, obviously to the left and to the right of the stream. There are meadow areas, there are shrub, perennial layers that transition, there are existing trees, there are proposed trees. So, the whole idea is they're all a little bit different as you march up the hill, but they all provide a pretty rich and diverse habitat. The idea, there are some images here also that you'll probably see in your package, sort of a typical of what we're hoping this to be, you know, so with the formula for the plants and the placement of those, they do provide, I think, visual interest, they do provide stability, they do provide habitat, and I think, you know, it will, you know, be, it'll be fairly rich, just in terms of those types of animals that will be, and insects that will be inclined to really be able to take full advantage of the site.
Right now, you have an absence of fauna or, you have a bunch.
We're great.
We have more species richness, more diversity, it's a greater mosaic. It's going to be a pretty high functioning area. Clint, do you want to touch on elevation D, the path to the slope?
Sure, so, elevation D is here, you see this one? This is where we're really trying to encourage pockets, perennials, shrubs, some trees, we don't want to, the problem with planting trees on that steep slope is they do a lot of disturbance in trying to get the tree on a steeper slope, and also maintain it there, you know, they're inclined to fall over. So, by getting a rich mix of, again, perennials, ground covered shrubs, small, both large and small shrubs, we get to stabilize those slopes and we also get to diversify the types of plants that are there. Treat it a little bit differently than the flatter areas.
So, when you look at the overbase that you provided from 2010 before, I guess any work was done on the, you know, the trees, and then what you have in 2017, there's a significant decrease in the amount of deciduous hardwood, you know, carnivorous coverage. And because the area is, is so steep, it's very important, it's part of the huge shade that makes up the, the green, you know, the, the green ambiance of Newcastle. And so, I'm just wondering, even with the, you know, the difficulties of planting on steep slopes, if you're planting plan, excuse me, if enough has been replaced in hardwoods to sort of, you can't recreate what, what was once there, but to sort of try and fill in that, that barrenness that now exists, you know, that used to be a lush vista, a lush, a lush new shade for the area.
One of the things we asked the group to do is, based on, you know, the memo that we're putting out for the planning board, you know, was to look at the forest, try to extrapolate what was there previously, and, you know, Greg's office did a very good job of doing an analysis, and they came up with what, you know, using reference sites, what they thought was the existing tree canopy in that area. You know, so based on their planting plan, they've, you know, they've done, they've tried to max out what they could put in long term, that'll help provide that, you know, vista again in the future. But I don't, you know, it's, 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 it's something that's going to take, you know, a long time to accomplish. But, but the thing I like about that step room is, you know, the previous forest community, because of deer browse primarily and land use history, you did not have much of an understory. You know, so the opportunity here is you're creating multi-layers of habitat, you know, you're working from the ground up, you know, so from a sustainability standpoint, it's going to be a much richer environment, and especially with the bean fence as well, we have an opportunity to really make this an example of what, what a normal forest should look like if you didn't have deer browse and, you know, other impacts associated with it.
And I'm going to add that too, that the shrub layer that you're recommending in that particular area on the slopes, it's, it's going to be good sized shrubs, you're not talking about two or three foot shrubs, and then we'll see, see how many things come together.
So, I think it's, I think what you find is, you know, I mean, the tree selection they have, you know, if you get it five to 10 years, you will, you know, it will come back to resemble.
They're mass rotations, they're probably, like, probably 12 to, you know, 12 to 18 inches a year potentially.
So, what was it, sort of 45-ish deciduous and 15-ish edgewise?
Yeah, I mean, they're a mix.
Yeah, we ended up with, there's a mix of trees, there's a 150 trees, 20 to 175 shrubs, 15,000, 696 perennials, another 12,600 plugs, you know, so it's, there's a lot of stuff that's going back in there.
And so, the flowers, the perennials will be flowers, flowering?
Yeah, they'll be pollinator types, so where they're within the riparian area, they'll be more adapt to, you know, wet feet. As they get out into some of the more open areas, in the upland areas, they'll be tolerant of those types of soils. So, you'll get everything from, I can speak to the numbers and varieties of insects and, you know, but just in terms of the plants themselves, I mean, everything from, from black axus and to joe pie wheat, the things that, you know, we haven't seen in a native environment in a long time, because we just never have a fighting chance.
That would be an oasis for a lot of birds, like.
They would.
Migrant bird wants.
For swimming birds and. Both ground birds and nesting, tree nesting birds can be.
Are the plugs the grasses? What did you say, plugs?
So, what we're referring to with plugs are perennials, actually. So, what we do, and we talked to Steve a little bit about it last night, in terms of the placement of that, so the idea would be able to drill, you know, holes about the size of a tennis ball, so it has a plenty, you know, when you put a plug, it's like a bulb that can go in there and get established, it really, you know, it's not trying to fight and break through the, sort of the grass layer, it will, it'll germinate and come up on its own.
Yeah.
But there, you know, like I say, there are thousands of those, and there's probably, you know, 20, 30, 40 different varieties of things, so.
It's going to be a nice position, it should be, should suit a lot of, like you said, a lot of, a lot of birds and a lot of insects.
It reminds me of the place where we, we visited, where a fellow went to put in a pool and.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that was a nice hillside.
Yeah, so they.
Yeah, there were, I mean, there was places alive with insects.
You were allowed to stay there, was there?
Yes, yep. So, that's the idea.
Are you drinking milk, Lee?
Yes.
To the butterflies?
All right, we've got our special breathing.
I thought the planning plan was very, very, very impressive, and couldn't agree with you more in terms of how it's going to bring vitality where it was basically a dead environment. Just up the road a little bit, I mean, the nature conservancy's been dealing with the invasives, and last year they went out and killed all the barberry, I guess they can do that.
Was that Myers killed it?
Yeah, and killed all those, and now you see what, how, it just, there's nothing underneath, there's no understory whatsoever, it's just dead.
Yeah, no problem, you have fragments, we don't.
It's still grass moving, and, you know, it's just.
Yeah, it's still grass, it's still.
From garlic mustard, too.
Yep.
In terms of process, they, they will be coming back in front of the environmental board again, you know, so the board can go through a little more detail, you know, and then when the board feels comfortable, they will, you know, make a recommendation for that.
I would like to, again, make a request to visit the site, so if somebody's got the opportunity in the next few weeks, before they come up again on the next agenda, which won't be in two weeks, Lord?
Might, yes.
No.
No, okay. So, before the next time you guys come, I'd just love to go visit.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, I missed the first one.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
And I'll need everybody.
It'd be tough to replicate that experience, though, since it was about 10 and a half years.
It's the exact opposite of what we expected.
Yeah, I'll do it in August.
Actually, this time we can only hope for 95 degrees and humidity.
That's a walk up that hill. So, who do I coordinate that with?
Um, you can coordinate it with me, so I'll give you my card, and you can call me directly, and I'll.
You got it.
And I guess we'll just wait to hear back.
Yeah, I want to see it, it's a big thing.
All right, we'll wait to hear back.
I'm assuming.
Your stuff going over to Bob, and then we'll get information on the stormwater and.
Well, we're going to get more survey information as, you know, along Sorrel Street and.
That's a bit the equivalent, Larry.
Yeah.
The bone of sorrel for Jerry, how to look at.
To look at, yeah, yeah.
Good. So, that's the next step for us, for the planning, and then.
I think, so we're going to get Barry's stormwater information, and I think we'll go from there.
Okay.
That sounds like the next.
Yeah. And Steve, you're working on the, the planting process, and, and with the ERB, so.
I just want to give a compliment to the, to the project team, because we gave them a very comprehensive list of, you know, information that we wanted, and I think they've done a very good job of impressing us.
Yep.
Thank you, Steve.
Appreciate it, Steve.
We didn't take this lightly either.
The message was received, we heard you all loving it.
I just want to make sure that you folks from ERB, if you have questions, even if, don't be afraid if, if you think we.
We heard this last night.
We had the earlier opportunity to fire last night, yeah. Are you doing it again tomorrow?
No, somebody figured we needed to hear it twice before we sent it in.
Well, no, Phil, Phil, that's a compliment, but the rule of seven, you're very welcome.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.